Okay. All right, well, let me bring the meeting to order. Um, it's March first, two thousand twenty-one. And seven o'clock. Uh, let's see, I don't see Cindy here, so I'll do a roll call. Artie Brason here, St. Clair County Clay Township. Joanne Shirkey, are you here?
Sure. Here. Say, Clay Township, St. Clair County. That's all I need.
Okay, Mark.
Hey, uh, here, St. Clair County Clay Township.
Okay, Maureen.
Yeah, I'm here at my house.
Who was that? Mark.
Brother me.
Okay, I see Maureen, Chris O'Regan.
Yes, Chris O'Regan, Clay Township, St. Clair County. I don't hear Maureen, I'm afraid she may not have audio again.
She's on, she's, I, yeah, she doesn't have party.
But I can't hear.
Yeah, she, I don't sure, I don't sure her is being muted either.
Can you mute her and unmute her?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, uh, can't do that. There's a phone number here, too, a seven four eight, that I see, that's, that's not muted. She'll be right back.
I gotta get her phone.
Yeah. Oh, another laptop. There's a seven four eight zero zero two one, which I'm going to mute, it's, we're getting a lot of noise from. Well, while we're waiting for Maureen, um, I just wanted to mention, I, I, uh,
I haven't checked yet.
What's that?
I haven't said that I'm present yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chrissy, I missed you.
Christie Hilton in, Clay Township, Michigan, St. Clair County.
Okay, thank you, I think I got everybody else. I lo- we lost a, Clay Township, we lost a friend, uh, this past week, Bob McCoy, he was supervisor, for I think about eight years, over in Ira. Went to his, um, funeral, uh, this last week, and that was too bad, so. He's a very nice guy, if anyone knew him.
Yes, good man.
Yep. Maureen, are you with us yet? Oh, okay. You can, um, all right, well, let's press on. Uh, first thing on the agenda, supervisors report, how does that get to the top? I think I move that back down. But anyhow, I'll start out. Um, our, uh, water reporter, current status is, actually, I just checked it today, we're down, uh, five seventy-six point seven five. Um, and, uh, most of the ice in the river is gone. That is actually about four inches below where it was before the ice came in the river, which, um, kind of, um, is, that's a good thing. And, uh, most of our, uh, snow is gone, but I'm sure there's a lot of groundwater, um, that hasn't made it into the river yet, too. So, but our, our levels are, are looking okay, and I want to give kudos to the St. Clair, or the, the US Coast Guard, for minimizing our flooding that we, uh, had here in Elgin, acting Clay Township and, and further up north. So, um.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, are you here?
I'm here in Chesterfield Township, McComb County.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, we had our, our annual county road commission meeting. A few of our trustees were on there, um, we went over the, um, road and bridge projects, uh, for the county and, uh, and how they were funded, uh, it was, it was a good meeting. And I did submit the initial paperwork for the, um, grant process for Blue Bill Bridge. And if granted, we're working on funding for two thousand twenty-four. Right now, had to get it in, um, this month, and, uh, and so, uh, that, that should be good to go, hopefully it'll get funded. I met with the county Road Home Wars Association this past week, along with Chris O'Regan. And then, uh, that was the Harson's Island Home Wars Association, along with Joanne Shirkey. Um, and those were interesting meetings. We, we, we received a lot of complaints on people for, uh, about parking on Steyer Road, down there, and Ed Lane and B Lane, uh, they're, they're mostly, uh, ice fishermen. And, um, the response to it, the county road commission, uh, did put up no parking signs, they, they went up Friday. Actually, I think it was Thursday afternoon, they, they, they went up, and, um, so I, I think Friday, I received three phone calls from people down there thanking us for it and, and the county road, so, um, that's, uh, helped them out a little bit, um, it, it was getting pretty, pretty crazy down there, I, I have to admit. The Frost Laws go into effect, uh, Wednesday, March third. I, I'm really surprised, they, I, I got the fax last week, I'm really surprised they didn't go on today, but, uh, March, March third, they will go on. So, uh, the weight limits will be, uh, restrictions will be on. Um, been dealing with a lot of light and building issues, uh, what else popped up today, I'd been doing work on, uh, Bike Pass, and, uh, oh, a couple other things, oh, I've been working on, uh, with, uh, No Limits Fishing, the charter, getting that thing going, um, with, uh, uh, helping them out, and we should have a contract that's blessed by attorney for, I was hoping to have it this mean, but we didn't get it in time. Um, but I, I don't think there'll be any issues with that. As you recall, we had an emergency sewer fix, uh, I don't know, seems like a month ago, six weeks ago, on Butterfield. Uh, we got most of the costs, um, together on that, and, uh, we're in, uh, talks with DTE and the contractor, they are gonna pay a hundred percent of those costs, I just want to let the board know, that, uh, we, we didn't forget about that, and, uh, we're in, uh, conversations with them, and there, there's no arguments going on with that. The plan, I, I received an email from late last week, uh, from Plan, Rod, our planner. Uh, they, they did discuss, the planning commission didn't, didn't discuss the framework for the, uh, primary caregiver, giver ordinance, or cannabis ordinance, medical marijuana, whatever you want to call it. And, um, they did set, uh, for a public hearing on their March twenty-fourth meeting, I believe, and, um, uh, i- if the, uh, planning commission acts to recommend it at, at that meeting, the township board should be able to act in, uh, one of those meetings in April, so that's a good thing. And also, just received the email today, uh, from the planner, um, about, uh, short-term rentals, I did forward it to the board members, if you didn't see it yet. That they have a, a draft set for, uh, they're recommending to us, I did forward it to an attorney, to get the attorney's blessing, and if there's any comments. So our next meeting, we'll have to set up a public hearing date for that, to, to hear, uh, uh, so, so people can, uh, comment on that, and, uh, then I, the way I, I see it, af- after the planning, or after we pass the ordinance, the planning commission then can, uh, also write zoning ordinance as far as land use. How, how, how it works, or how, how, how they want, the planning commission wants to control it, as far as, uh, zoning, if it's gonna be in, you know, R, R one, R two, R M. If they're gonna allow it on public roads versus private roads, I know, um, Ben Airbnb, or Ben Breakfast, this can't go on private roads, um. There's a few other things, I've had people call me and concerned about parking boat trailers. A lot of people will bring a boat in, uh, with them and, and, and put it in the water, and then they, they have to have a spot to put their boat trailer for, for however long. And, uh, I, I, I think what we just have to do is make sure that these, uh, short-term rentals are, are a supplement to our community, as opposed to, um, a detriment. And, uh, 'cause there is a need for that, that kind of thing. Been doing, uh, work for music in the park for both mainland dates and the island dates, and, uh, that's, that's really the main stuff that's been going on the past two weeks, so. That concludes my report, so, next we have bills payable. I'll entertain a motion for bills payable.
Well, board members, I will make a motion to support and approve the bills payable in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll support that motion.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call, do a roll call vote, Artie Brason, aye, Joanne Shirkey.
Aye.
Mark Burchard.
Aye.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Maureen Bowery.
Yes.
Okay, Chrissy Hilton.
Yes.
Okay, did I miss anybody? I don't think so, okay, motion passed. Uh, next we have public comments, do we have any public comments? Any public comments?
Uh, Carol Sampson.
Hi Carol Sampson, want to state your, um, address, please?
Six zero three nine Point Tumble Road. Um, I, I saw Friday that there, there was a premier garbage disposal that picked up my garbage in that Mterra, who's premier?
That's a rental truck that Mterra owns, or leases.
Okay, I just wanted to know what that was about, and, um, I know, I, I want to bring up again for, about the fence for the public park that we're having here by the Pearl Beach Park there. Have you, um, got with the planners or anything about the fence that, uh, you said that in the very beginning you'd put up for our area down here?
Not yet.
Okay, do you have a date when you're gonna do that?
No, but if you want, I can send you an email, that's a DDA function, and DDA has not been meeting, uh, due to the COVID thing.
So in the very beginning, you didn't mention the DDA, you just said, yes, definitely, we could do it, but, so, you will send me an email?
If, if, if you want, me too.
Okay, when will the DDA meet, that we'll know, we don't know?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Um, there, in your one notes here, you have an extension of a, a grant for the county park to purchase that parcel, two four two five Point Tumble Road. Is, was that, or included with the original grant, or is this an extra one?
It's an extra one, to buy another piece of property.
Okay, yeah, can you say how much the grant's gonna be for, or?
How, how, how the, how the grants work, they're seventy-five percent of the praise value.
Okay, so, if we get the grant, that means, uh, like, do we pay, uh, they, we get the grant, but we have to match the grant?
There's a twenty-five percent grant, and this is the for St. Clair County to pay, buy it, not Clay Township. If you read the thing as a support letter for St. Clair County to get the grant.
Okay, um, I'm wondering though, too, when you get grants, that, does Clay Township have to, um, like?
Yeah, yeah, this is public comments, it's not questions, Carol. So, I mean, if, if you want to send me an email, or, or whatever you want to do, I'll be happy to answer them, but th- this is public comments.
Okay, then I guess you're not gonna answer any more questions than I have, um.
Send me an email, I'll be happy to answer them all, or call me, or come in and see me.
Uh, I would rather have an email, so, okay. All righty.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Going once. Going twice, three times. Public comments? Okay, hearing none, move right along to consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda consisting of check reports and communication. Check, checks board approved, uh, two thousand and fifteen, checks dispersed in between two thousand and fifteen and three one. Payroll report for two, for February. Uh, Sea Castle resignation in the US Census, thank you, but, um, on this, I see nothing about board member minutes from the last meeting, so I would like to make a statement to, uh, Cindy to, uh, be sure that we get a copy of those.
Okay, do we have a second? Or, okay, is that you, Mark?
Yes.
And leaving notes, yep, Cindy's been out of town, and, uh, so that's probably why we don't have the minutes. Is there any, uh, discussion on the consent agenda?
I have a quick thought, um, we're not supporting the check reports for two thousand and fifteen, we're supporting the check reports from February fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-one.
Right.
So we're all in consensus, I think you misspoke, Joanne.
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye, or raise your hand, or?
Aye.
Aye.
Think I got anyone opposed? I don't see anyone opposing, motion passes. All right, next, uh, new business, we have a resolution twenty-two-one oh-three, this is, uh, in support of the St. Clair County, um, Parks Rec to, um, write a grant to purchase a piece of property at twenty-four, twenty-five Point Tumble Road. If you're not sure which one, that's the Yellow House, up by the road. That was not in place or a part of the original grant. Um, this will be addition two. And, um, we don't have, there, there's not a, a purchase agreement as of yet, but, you know, we have a deadline on to, uh, get the monies for the grant, so we like to get that, just in case we, we do get something, uh, going on that property. And like I say, this is in support of the St. Clair County, um, submission of, of the grant to, uh, the national, or the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. I'll entertain a motion if someone would like.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash zero three to support St. Clair County's submission of a North Channel County Park Expansion Grant.
Okay, we have motion, we have support.
Or, support.
Okay, any, uh, discussion or questions?
We in a position to discuss, uh, cost on that, or that?
Well, no, I mean, there, we don't know what the costs are, like I said, there's no purchase agreement or anything else. The, the amount of the grant is, uh, seventy-five percent of the praise value. And I think the county is in the process right now of getting appraisal done on it. I don't know, usually, what do you think, Mark, the appraisal probably come in about a hundred and fifty grand or so, so.
I don't know how big that lot is, but.
It's, it's not real big.
It is the house, yeah, it, it, a lot, the appraisal sort it out, I'm sure.
Right, and like I say, how, how, how the trust fund grant works is, uh, that it'll pay up to seventy-five percent of the praise value. And, um, um, we just, you know, the process that you all know would take a long time, and, uh, we don't want to have to wait a year, if we, uh, we do get, get the ball rolling and there, there's a deal made, so, and if there's not, the grant just disappears. So. Any other discussion or questions?
I just, it'll be good if the county gets that piece, it's, it'll be a nice addition to what they already have going.
Yeah, yes, thank you, so. Okay, hearing no more discussion, I'll do a roll call. Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Chrissy Hilton.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bowery. Artie Brason, yes, did I get everybody, I'm just going down the list, I'm saying, like, I think I got everybody, all right, motion passes. Next, we have, uh, refunding bond interest payment, um. We'd like to just tell the board about this, it's, it's in the budget that we do this, Chrissy knows more about it, but, uh, this is the, um, refunding to pay the interest on the refunding bonds that we, uh, received, that, um, we did, uh, what, seven, eight years ago, seven and a half years ago. These bonds will all be off, this bond will all be paid off of, uh, in the year of two thousand and twenty-two, next year, so. You have anything to add, Chrissy, on it?
Um, this is the interest-only payment, um, I believe the principal and interest payment is in, I think we'll put it on the packet in August.
Yeah. Okay, and, uh, this was a, a good thing, 'cause we were paying, you know, between five and seven percent on this, and that fund was a million dollars underwater, and, uh, quite honestly, uh, when we refunded it, we got, I believe, one point eight seven five percent interest or something like that. And this is the reason why we were able to, or we didn't have to raise our water rates for the past two or three years, so.
And there is some additional information on the website, um, we report on this with our financial reporting every year.
Okay, entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the payment for the two thousand and fourteen refunding bond interest in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, deriving from line item five nine one dash nine nine zero dash nine nine five point zero zero.
Maureen, I'll support it.
Okay, we have motion and support, let me break this down.
Luckily, she'll have the video.
Yeah, we will, and it is recording. Okay, we have motion and support, uh, any discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, Artie Brason, yes, Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Chrissy Hilton.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bowery.
Yeah.
And Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next we have, uh, to retain , uh, Seibert and Delowski as our general law counsel, it would be, uh, Christine Anderson would be the point of contact. Uh, we've been using her for a while. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to retain Christine Anderson of Seibert and Delaski, P L L C for general law counsel. I'll support that.
Okay, motions, court, any discussion?
Yeah, quick question, um, when we retain professional and legal services, um, do, does that come with a secondary contract? So the people that we've previously dealt with, are, are we under any obligations or any contracts to continue using the previous counsel?
No, we never had any contract with the previous counsel, normal, we have a contract with, uh, Seibert and Delowski. We don't pay a, a retainer fee, or, or a monthly retainer fee, or anything like that, it's just, you know, the hourly rate, um, as, as we go.
Time and material.
Yep.
It's my understanding that she has a pretty good track record of supporting, uh, municipalities around the area.
Yeah, that's all she does, um, as opposed to, um, you know, other, other attorneys we've been with, uh, they do, you know, all different types of law, she, she is a municipal attorney, that's all she does. So, I know Christie's been using her, uh, on, on stuff in the billing department, they've been, uh, quite satisfied, I don't know, would you want to kick in, Chrissy?
Yeah, I would say, um, there was an issue that we had about a year ago, um, maybe just a little under a year, where I had emailed our previous attorney, and I didn't get an answer from her, it was right around the time that we, um, hired Christine Anderson for our building department issues. So I made a cold call, and she kind of gave me some advice off the record, I actually got a response from our attorney three months later.
So. All right. Do we, do we have, I'm sorry, do we have motion on, on this yet?
Yes.
Okay, and who supported?
Joanne.
Joanne. Okay, any other, just, any more discussion?
The bio just seemed real good on her that you sent out, so.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I, I, I thought that would make it, you know, be easier for everybody, so.
Yeah, she's, I would say she's really quick to respond, uh, when we need something, which is, you know, we haven't been experiencing that for a while. Um, and she seems knowledgeable on some issues that we brought up that, you know, that we haven't gotten response with prior. According to her resume.
Be the one that is going to be reviewing the short-term rentals and the, uh, caregiver law?
Yes.
Okay.
According to her resume, she's highly, highly qualified, that's for sure.
Yeah, right.
Hey, Artie, if I may?
Sure.
Also, at the police department, she is our prosecuting attorney for Ira Township, so we've been working her, with her for several years, and, uh, even at the criminal end, she is fantastic, can't say enough about her.
Right, and we aren't, we, we, we're still keeping our prosecuting attorney, I, I, thanks for bringing that up, Mike, uh, Macamie, um, 'cause we, we have a good wor- working relationship with him, and then Mike can contest, they've been, he's been treating us pretty good, I, I think, right, Mike? Just give me a thumbs up there, so. Okay, so we have, uh, any more discussion, we have motion and support? Okay, uh, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye, or raise your hand.
Yes.
Okay, anyone opposed? Motion passes. So, um, that's all we have on the agenda. I was hoping to have a couple more things, but, uh, it didn't, didn't happen yet. We'll, we'll get them next time around, so. Other than that, uh, board member comments. Chris O'Regan, you have any comments?
Well, a couple things. Um, you know, sometimes our job as fresh season the township is, uh, uh, not the easiest in the world. Um, it's our job to, to take difficult situations and try and make the best of it for our community as a whole. So often we get bogged down with negative criticism. Uh, we get bogged down with some legalities. And I like the team that I'm with and I like the team that we're surrounding ourselves with. So I think we've got some real traction. Um, and I'm, I'm very happy to be living in Clay Township. Um, in addition, my, my weekly public service announcement is the ice is starting to get sketchy. Longer as a fisherman, I would no longer recommend any motor vehicles, any automobiles, any snowmobiles or any four-wheelers out there. You're really taking a big risk. Um, and I'm not even certain that it's safe for foot traffic. I know we have pockets where we're still looking at between four and six inches of ice, but it's deteriorating daily. The fishermen be careful, um, wear your floatables and make sure that you can fish with a buddy. Thank you.
Yeah, I, actually I had that written down. I know our fire, we, we've been getting calls of people falling in all week uh, through the ice, uh, doing dumb stuff, so definitely.
Yeah, be careful.
Yep. Uh, Joanne Shirkey.
Well, being the only one on the board that lives on the island, I am delighted that that ice is gone. Because I just want to get stuck on the mainland. I like the island too much. So, um, I was, I'm very glad to see that and I know, um, that Chief Rose has been real busy and and so has Chief Coach. There's lots going on all the time and, uh, kudos to both of you. And you too, Artie.
Well, thank you, Joanne. Mark Burchard.
Okay, we had, uh, our planning commission meeting on February twenty-fourth and, uh, we discussed the same things that Artie talked about here. Uh, the caregiver ordinance and the short-term rental, so I encourage everybody to take a look at that, uh, short-term rental, uh, draft and, uh, make any comments as necessary. I think it's, it's pretty comprehensive. It's, uh, in-depth. However, if you look at it in-depth, it's not a lot of things that somebody that owns a short-term rental is doing or shouldn't be doing anyway. So I don't think it's gonna be too hard pill of, pill to swallow. Uh, next meeting is the, uh, March tenth and the twenty-fourth. Uh, we will be, uh, covering and tying up the loose ends on those, uh, ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen.
Oh, um, I know I'm new, so you probably don't know, Joanne, but I do live on the island too. I just happened to be in Chesterfield, cause I come stay with my mom a little bit during the week, but I agree with you on the ice. I'm happy that the water levels are looking better this year, so hopefully we're gonna have, uh, much, much less flooding and just was a great meeting and thanks for putting it all together, Artie.
Yep, thank you, no problem. Okay, Chrissy.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, today was the last day for tax collection, uh, at Clay Township. So beginning tomorrow, we surrender our role to the county. Uh, so if you have any outstanding twenty twenty property taxes, you would need to, uh, begin contacting the county, uh, starting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I wanted to say miss you to Cindy too. Just so I wanted to say miss you to Cindy and we're thinking of her.
Yeah. Okay, I think that just me is left, right? I give, I, I get confused. I'm sorry. All right, uh, yes, uh, yep. Uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to, uh, Cindy Valentine, our clerk, coming back. She, she had to, uh, family emergency. She had to go out, out of town and our thoughts and prayers are her and her family. Um, and, uh, please come back. And, uh, also the, uh, backup with, um, Chris O'Regan said about the, say, uh, the ice. Uh, I was actually out on the lake, on the bay a week ago, Sunday, where it was still cold out and there was lots of people out on the ice. It was actually kind of, kind of crazy out there and on the bay. By around three o'clock, it was, it was, it, it was actually the, the places where you had to drive up to with your, uh, cars and RVs, trucks, whatever, to get back on the road. There, there, they were having drive for two, two and a half feet of water plus. And it was, it was getting pretty sketchy then as far as getting out of, um, off the bay. Um, but, uh, yeah, there, uh, it, it, it's definitely, uh, the ice is definitely compromised over the past few days and supposed to get warmer, I believe, after, but Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the close to fifty, bring it on. And, uh, yeah, I'm also excited that, you know, a lot of the ice is left there. There's not much ice left in the, in the lake either. Um, this morning a little bit, I, I, I saw it was blowing out of the east. I'm like, oh boy, when you see that, but got on the, um, on the satellite and there's really not much ice up there to, to, to even come down here anymore. So I think we're out of the woods. Plus Anchor Bay or the, the, the lake is pretty well empty. If we do get ice, it's just gonna run right through. So I, I, I think we're, we're out of the woods. You know, usually in March is, it's, it's our real challenging month is not in February, it's usually in March, but we had a warmer than usual summer. We don't, didn't have a lot of that ice pack up north, so. Um, ice and that, that, uh, yeah.
One more thing.
Yeah.
Pavilion rentals started today.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Do we have a lot of people? Usually we gotta.
Uh, I think they had a few people lined up first thing this morning and then I kind of heard it a little throughout the day, but I think there's still plenty of dates left.
Okay, that's, usually when we, we do the pavilion rental for the park next door, we, we have like a line of people. And, uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, I, I should, I'll, I'll put that out on social media tomorrow too, so. Um, other than that, uh, I hope everyone has a good, good, uh, couple weeks and everyone stay safe. Anyone have any questions or anything? Don't be afraid to call me, shoot me an email. Uh, do whatever you have to do, so. Uh, next.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep, I was gonna say, uh, our next meeting will be on Zoom, March fifteenth and hopefully in April we'll be in person. Uh, we have motion adjourned. Second then, everyone's gonna say ayes.
Aye.
Thanks for, uh, coming to the meeting and, uh, like I say, you, uh, anyone needs to say anything or questions, shoot me an email and, uh, take care of you. Other than that, be safe.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.